Are we starting yet? Is anyone here?
I think we just went live on Facebook, but I haven't heard anything from the City of High Point screen yet.
Okay. Are we starting yet? Is anyone here?
I think we just went live on Facebook, but I haven't heard anything from the City of High Point screen yet.
Okay. All right. I'd like to welcome everyone to this special meeting at High Point City Council beginning at 3:30. I'm going to begin by calling the roll. In the room, we have Councilwoman Peters, I'm going to begin by calling the roll. In the room, we have Councilwoman Peters, Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Peters? Councilman Johnson, trying to find the boxes here, Councilman Moore, the Mayor pro temp, Chris Williams, Councilman Johnson, trying to find the boxes here, Councilman Moore, the mayor pro temp, Chris Williams, Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Moore? The mayor pro temp, Chris Williams? Wesley Hudson? Wesley Hudson, and Councilman Cyril Jefferson, and I'm President, Jay Wagner, the mayor. Wesley Hudson, and Councilman Cyril Jefferson, and I'm President, Jay Wagner, the mayor. And Councilman Cyril Jefferson? And I'm President, Jay Wagner, the mayor. We do expect Councilman Holmes and Councilman Jones either remotely or coming a little bit later. We do expect Councilman Holmes and Councilman Jones either remotely or coming a little bit later. We do expect Councilman Holmes and Councilman Jones either remotely or coming a little bit later. They're on. Both of them are on. Okay. They're on. Both of them are on. Okay. They're on. Both of them are on. Okay. Just to confirm, Councilman Holmes, can you hear me? Are you in with us? Just to confirm, Councilman Holmes, can you hear me? Are you in with us? Just to confirm, Councilman Holmes, can you hear me? Are you in with us?
Just Victor.
Just Victor.
Just Victor. Okay. Councilman Jones, are you with us? Just Victor. Okay. Councilman Jones, are you with us? Just Victor. Okay. Councilman Jones, are you with us?
I am.
I am.
I am.
Okay. All right. So Councilman Holmes is not with us yet, but we may get him, right? Okay. All right. So Councilman Holmes is not with us yet, but we may get him, right? Okay. All right. So Councilman Holmes is not with us yet, but we may get him, right? It does sound kind of like the voice of God, doesn't it? It does sound kind of like the voice of God, doesn't it? It does sound kind of like the voice of God, doesn't it?
It does, doesn't it? I appear.
It does, doesn't it? I appear.
It does, doesn't it? I appear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm always with you.
I'm always with you.
I'm always with you.
So. So. So.
Hey, I'll be one.
Hey, I'll be one.
Hey, I'll be one.
Yeah. So first, we're going to go into a closed session for attorney-client privilege. Yeah. So first, we're going to go into a closed session for attorney-client privilege. Yeah. So first, we're going to go into a closed session for attorney-client privilege. And then we will come back out of closed session at some point and have a presentation on system development fees, And then we will come back out of closed session at some point and have a presentation on system development fees, And then we will come back out of closed session at some point and have a presentation on system development fees, the minority business policy. I think that's it, unless you've added something I don't know about. the minority business policy. I think that's it, unless you've added something I don't know about. the minority business policy. I think that's it, unless you've added something I don't know about. So I will need a motion then to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege. So I will need a motion then to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege. So I will need a motion then to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege.
So move.
So move.
So move.
And for personnel. Okay. And for personnel. Okay. And for personnel. Okay.
So move.
So move.
There's a motion been made by Councilman Britt Moore and a seconded by Tyrone Johnson. There's a motion been made by Councilman Britt Moore and a seconded by Tyrone Johnson. There's a motion been made by Councilman Britt Moore and a seconded by Tyrone Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Not hearing it. I'll call the roll. Councilman Johnson, how do you vote? Okay. Not hearing it. I'll call the roll. Councilman Johnson, how do you vote? Okay. Not hearing it. I'll call the roll. Councilman Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Peters? Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
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 Councilman Moore? Councilman Moore? Councilman Moore?
Aye.
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 Councilman Hudson? Councilman Hudson? Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
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 Councilman Jones? Councilman Jefferson? Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
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 The mayor votes aye, so that passes by a vote of eight to zero. We're now in closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel. And the mayor votes aye, so that passes by a vote of eight to zero. We're now in closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel. And the mayor votes aye, so that passes by a vote of eight to zero. We're now in closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I'm back if you guys can hear me.
Okay, so we are back in open session, I Point City Council. And I'd like to recognize, I believe Terry Howke is going to give us a presentation on system development fees.
Well, it's social distance with Master. Good evening, council. We want to talk about the systems development fee tonight. Because of the time limit, I'll probably go through my part really fast. First off, I want to introduce the team. From StanTech, we have David Hyder, who will be doing the presentation. I believe remotely logging in is Katie Morsette, and I'm not positive. The primary people on our end were Derek Boone, Linda Barnes, and Tom Beckett, who worked on, helped compile everything. System development fee, what is it? It's a one-time charge paid by a new customer to recover a portion of all the costs from constructing water and sewer capacity. In general, system development fees serve as a mechanism of which growth can pay its own way, and minimize the extent at which existing customers must bear the cost of facilities that will be used to serve the new customers. The city currently does not have system developed fees. We have what the term, we call it acreage and frontage fees. Acreage fees are roughly $350 an acre for water, $350 an acre for sewer. Frontage fees run from $15 for water and $20 for sewer. And that's for lines that front their property and that they access to. What are the legal requirements for system development fee? While the legal requirement for development and implementation of system development fees varies significantly from state to state, the state of North Carolina passed the System Development Fee Act in 2017, which outlines specific requirements that utilities need to follow when implementing such fees. It grants local government entities that own and operate our systems, water and sewer systems, the authority to assess system development fees for provision of utility service to new developments. What are new developments? It's a subdivision of land, construction or change of an existing structure that increases the service needs, or three, any use of land which increased service needs within one year but no longer than 12 months of the development fee being adopted. Right now, I'm going to go ahead and let David Hyder go ahead and go through the presentation. And if you have any questions, we'll try to address them if we have time. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Again, my name is Dave Hyder. I'm with StanTech. And in the interest of time, I will try to keep the presentation brief. But in terms of what we're going to talk about this evening, I want to provide a little bit more background to what Terry just provided. We'll talk about the methodology that you use to calculate system development fees, talk about the actual calculations that we used, some benchmarking to show you how you compare with some other communities. We'll also talk about front foot charges, ultimately what the bill impacts would be to new customers joining the system, and then wrap up with the recommendations. Just real briefly, I am with StanTech. StanTech is a global engineering firm. I'm part of the Financial Services Group, and this is what we do. We essentially do water and sewer rates studies around the country. Over the past three years, I've done about 24 of these system development fees studies in the state of North Carolina because of the new legislation. So we do have a lot of experience with it. In terms of your current approach, as Terry mentioned, right now you don't have system development fees. For water and sewer, when a customer joins a system, you charge what's called an acreage charge and a front foot charge. So that acreage charge is assessed per acre of property size, $350 for water, $350 for sewer. And then the frontage charge is based upon the length of the line fronting the property, $15 per linear foot for water, $20 for sewer. One of the interesting things, this is a little bit of a unique approach. There are communities that do front foot charges, but the acreage charge is pretty unique in North Carolina as well as around the country. And one of the reasons why it's a little bit unique is that the current approach doesn't differentiate based upon demands in the system. So if you think about it, if you've got a high-developed acre of commercial property, they may use a lot more water sewer than a single-family home that's on an acre, so it doesn't differentiate. So that's a little bit of background on your current approach. What system development fees are, their charges to customers joining the water and sewer system. The intent is to have growth pay for growth. You've built this infrastructure to serve folks before they come, therefore, when they join, they pay to join. The fees are supposed to be based on a unit of service to give you that differentiation, to differentiate rather than just the acreage. And as Terry mentioned, the fees are legislated in North Carolina. Since they are legislated in North Carolina, there's some pretty specific prescriptive rules in terms of how you calculate the fees. You have to use one of three methodologies that I'll go through in a second. You have to document the study, identify any assumptions that you're making. You have to do it on a per-unit of service, so it reflects the demand placed on the system. And then you have to incorporate a credit in that calculation. So we'll talk about all those.
But can I stop you just a second? Define for me what unit per service, what's a service unit?
A per-unit of service would be some measure of potential demand on the system. So if I'm at McDonald's compared to a single-family home, McDonald's is going to use more water and generate more sewer on the system. So it's just a differentiation and a recognition that the size of the customer that's going to be joining.
That could be a gallon of water or a gallon of sewage?
Correct. Yep. So in terms of the three methodologies that can be used, there's, the first one is called the buy-in approach or the buy-in method. And this approach is basically setting the fee based completely on your historical investments in the system. So what you've built today is the basis for the fee. If you use that approach per legislation, you have to, you can use the revenues for anything capital-related rehab or expansion. And this is typically used for a system that has a lot of capacity to sell and not plans to really expand that capacity. Another approach is the incremental cost method, and that's really the flip side. If you don't have any capacity to sell, you're building a lot of new capacity. The fees would be solely based on your capital improvement plan, solely based on the expansion projects. Under this approach, if you take that approach, the revenues can only be used for growth-related projects, so you can't use them for rehab. And the third, and what we recommend for the city, is the combined method. And this takes the two. You have historical investments in the system, but you also have some expansion in your CIP. And so it uses a weighted average of those two and comes up with a cost based on both a backward and a forward-looking. Under this approach, you can only use the revenues for expansion-related projects. Typically used for a community that has capacity to sell, but it also has some plans in their CIP to expand the system. Okay? So the way the calculation actually works, dive into the details, is the system development fee is basically the value of the system minus a credit divided by the system capacity. So you're coming up with a unit of capacity, is essentially what you're doing. And so defining some of those terms, the value of the utility system is generally you take the depreciated value of the investments you've made, bring those up to current replacement costs, and then you add in that the value of the future system to give you the value of the system. From that, you take out a credit, which I'll talk about more in a minute, but that's generally the principle, and you donate assets. And then you divide by how much capacity you can serve with your current system as well as with that expansion that you're providing. And so one of the, one of the things that came out of the legislation was that the development community wanted to have their input. And one of their main inputs was that there needs to be some credit against the system value. You can't take the full system value because there are assets that were donated. So you have developers that have put in system assets, so you have to take those out. Also, new connections are going to pay debt service once they join the system through the user rates. So you take out the existing principal on debt. And both of those reductions are essentially conform with what the American Water Works Association prescribes as an appropriate methodology. So those essentially reduces the value of the system in the fee. So we have the details here. This is for the water system. The value of the utility system that we came up with is 169 million for the water system. That's historical investments plus the expansionary CIP, your outstanding debt, the water system assets, and the donated assets is about 38 million, so we take that out. And then your system capacity with some expansion in there added in there is about 28 million gallons per day. So the detailed calculation is shown here, and we're coming up with a per ERU, per equivalent residential unit, system development fee for water of $838.
Quick question.
Yes.
In order for it to be a CIP, does that have to be a project that's already underway, already planned, already close to being finished? What constitutes, because I imagine there are some CIPs that are, I guess, down the road, but I mean, does that really add into our value, I guess?
It's supposed to be an unpublished CIP. When the legislation first came out, they said 20 years you could look out, but then they brought that back to 10 years. So it's something supposed to be in the next 10 to 15 years of your plan.
Do you have to have some revenue set aside for it already, or, I mean, it just has to be something that you want to do with over aspirational?
Yeah, it has to be, you can't make up a, it has to be something that you actually plan to need to do to expand your system. Yep. And so just to dive into the details a little bit more in terms of that system capacity, 28 million gallons per day. If we convert that into an ERU, which is an equivalent residential unit, using what a typical household uses, 183 gallons per day, that's how we come up with a per-unit cost for water. And we do the exact same thing on the sewer side, more valuable system asset, almost 383 million in terms of asset value. The credit, 95 million. And then with the expansion at the west side plant, you're going to have essentially 36 million gallons per day of capacity in the system. So we do the exact same calculation, as you can see here, and we come up with a per ERU charge for sewer of $2,153. That's what we've calculated. So once we calculate those per ERU amounts, getting to the mayor's question earlier in terms of how do you potentially scale that, the most common approach is actually use meter size, because the size of the water meter essentially dictates the hydraulic capacity that you can pull in the system. And so it's very common to take that ERU charge and then scale it based upon these equivalents here based on meter size. The American Water Works Association publishes these meter-size equivalents, which is hydraulic capacity. So for example, if you have a 3/4-inch meter, they essentially, a 6-inch meter would essentially use, have the potential to use 45 times that 1-inch meter. And so if we now take that and do the math and build this out, you can then see in the table here what the system development fees would be by meter size. And as you get a bigger meter, the more demand you can place in the system, essentially the more capacity you're buying in the system. And so you can see a total for a typical single-family with a 5/8ths or 3/4 would be about $3,000. And if you had a large 6-inch customer come in, it would be $134,000. So again, scales based upon that potential capacity. Essentially, you have to reserve a lot more capacity for somebody that can use that much. But we wanted to show you how you compare. This is a typical single-family home. Blue is water, system development fee, sewer is green. And you can see right there, you're at the lower end of the scale, right between Greensboro and Winston-Salem, in terms of a combined fee of about $3,000. And again, this is for a single-family 3/4-inch metered home.
Is this currently what their fees are?
This is, current published fees.
Oh, our fees right now are under $1,000 for all intents and purposes for a single-family house?
Correct. It just depends how much, how big the lot is.
Square.
And the linear foot.
We're under $1,000 for. So we're looking at scrapping the old system and putting this system in place? Just to be clear.
Yep.
Because of the legislation.
By doing anything like this, does this open up a doorway for us to limit the amount of people that can live in a single-family home?
No, it really wouldn't.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
But I have another slide here that just expands it out even further. This is a more detailed benchmarking. Those surrounding jurisdictions are similar-sized utilities, and you can see that the vast majority scale them by meter size. So it is by far the most common approach. You can see some have higher water charges than their sewer and vice versa, but you again fall right at that lower end of the range in terms of the comparisons. But to the point earlier, in terms of this is a more defensible approach, it does fall under the legislation, but it also differentiates, as we were talking about, based on the potential demand. So we also did calculate front-footage charges, and these would be collected in rare instances where you're extending lines, where you're actually putting in the lines and extending service to new connections, or if you were putting in infrastructure in a subdivision or something like that, again, a rare instance. But if the city does intend to extend lines like that, you could charge a front-footage charge. This would be in addition to the system development fee, and the calculations are similar to the system development fees, which I have on the next slides here. So again, we take the value now of the distribution system, we take out a credit, we look at the length of pipe in the distribution system and essentially come up with a per-lin, per-linear-footage charge of $7 per linear foot for water. And then we did the same thing on the sewer side and came up with a per-linear-footage charge of $10. I would say that the vast majority of times, you won't be charging a front-footage charge. This would be a rare instance where you're extending a line.
This is for extending line to a service that doesn't exist.
Correct.
Hooking onto existing for a new.
Yep. And typically, when you have a subdivision built out, the developer will put in that infrastructure, and therefore, you wouldn't charge a frontage charge.
So this is really for somebody that's on a well that wants to extend out, the house already exists?
Correct. Yeah. We do have some examples. Here on the last few slides, the first example to the left is a residential bill comparison. So this is a kind of showing your current approach and then the proposed. And so this one has 128 linear feet of frontage. It's 0.44 acres. They've got a 5/8 inch meter. So right now, you can see for water, you charge $1,900, and the frontage fee, $154, the acreage fee. And then you have a tap fee for making a physical connection, and then a meter charge totals up to about $3,900. And then similarly, on the sewer side, it's about $4,500. So $8,600 in total for this particular example. Using the proposed approach, again, because of the fact that you don't have that frontage charge, it's actually lower at $6,800. So there would be a reduction there in that instance. To the right, if you were to do a line extension, somebody on a well or septic, and you're extending that line, and you did charge the frontage charge, then it would be about the same as what it currently is. But this is going to vary development by development. So next slide, we have a subdivision comparison. So this is a subdivision, 1,500 linear feet of pipe. It's 30 acres. You've got 100 meters going in, residential-sized meters. You can see under your current approach, with the acreage charge and the frontage charge, the meter fee would be about $100,000. Under the proposed approach with this, the system development fee for each individual meter, it would be about $319,000, which is very much in line with what Greensboro and Winston Salem charges. Very comparable there, but given this type of dynamic, it would be, would be more expensive. And then finally, we have an example here of a commercial customer, 325 linear feet of frontage, five acres of the two inch meter, um, they would see a slight increase of about seven percent. So going from $15,000 in total to about $16,000 under this example. And so in terms of our recommendations, we would recommend moving forward with the combined method. The legislation within the state does require, if you are going to move forward with this approach, that you have to publish a written report and it has to be on your website for 45 days so the public can comment. After that comment period, then you need to hold a public hearing to actually adopt the fees is the approach that they require.
The, the, the calculations that you made, is that essentially, I know it's not revenue neutral across the board, but is that a revenue neutral calculation based on what we're collecting now roughly?
It's going to vary depending on the type of development patterns that are happening. So if you had a bunch of one offs where you're just extending lines to individual homes versus subdivision developments.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, you get from, we had so, we had a, a single house going down. We had, you know, it looked like a commercial development going slightly up.
Right.
And then, but, um, a lot of it on the, a lot more impact on the, uh, development of a subdivision, so.
Right.
But I'm, I'm, and that's why I'm saying, I know, I know that for everybody, it's not going to be revenue neutral or we would just be collecting the same money but doing it a different way, uh, so.
Yeah, in general, it should produce similar levels of revenue.
We'll say for that residential, 125 feet of frontage is a lot of frontage, so. I hate playing devil's advocate and I know someone's going to slap my hand for saying that, but that's a, that's a heavy frontage. My house, we're on two lots and I'm not 125.
Yeah, I mean, you, you look in the city of High Point, most, um.
75 feet is a big, that's a big front.
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of neighborhoods with, where the houses are 50 foot frontage.
But that's a small point.
Okay, were you finished?
Yep, I'd be happy to take any more questions.
Okay. Any, any questions? Are, are you looking essentially for a vote today on whether to put this out for public comment, or do you, you wanted to go through committee first, or what are you thinking, Randy?
I think that's entirely up to you, if, if, um, one, we had a consultant go through it in accordance with law, the state law. So it's, it's very defensible, that's the one thing. Second, uh, you do not have to implement this now, uh, you can put a, a delayed implementation date on this. Uh, i- if you'd like, but it probably would be good, good to go ahead and put it out for public comment and then hold your public hearing and then if you decide to move forward with it, like we would recommend, that, uh, you could put a delayed, um, implementation date on. Just a couple of quick points to make, uh, as he started out the presentation, um, it's, it's kind of like a change in philosophy, who's going to pay, the pie doesn't get any bigger. The pie is the same, so who's going to pay more of the pie? Is it going to be the new users or is it going to be your current users? The hope is that eventually, maybe not in the first year or two, but eventually that the current users of the system rates can go down or certainly not increase as much over a period of time and you'll get the new users of the system paying more of at least what this study shows is their fair share. So it's, it's kind of a change in philosophy and you've got to decide where you want to put that. The pie's not going to get any bigger, I mean, we still got to, we, we're under all kinds of regulations as to what we've got to do when it comes to water and sewer treatment, the extensions of lines and all of that. That's not going to change, but the price isn't going to change, it's who pays the bill. So what you've got to look at is who's going to pay that bill? Is it going to be more of the older users who've been paying for it or the newer users?
Randy, is that being considered for both residential and commercial, it would, that, that philosophy would extend to both areas?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So this has no budgetary effect?
Not initially.
Right.
Not initially, yeah, I mean, and that's why I think you probably go through the process, listen to your comments. And then if you, if you decide to move forward with it, which we would rec, strongly recommend, then you put some kind of delayed, uh, implementation date on it, uh, to give people a time to adjust to the change that's coming.
And, and to be clear, you mentioned earlier, I think the consultant mentioned that our current way is not really defensible. And I imagine we want to be defensible, right, Joanne?
Absolutely.
I, I think we should just go ahead and put it out for public comment and see, see what we get. We can always, um, put it in committee or, you know, deal with that once, once we get, see what the public thinks about it. Is there a motion maybe to that effect?
So move.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim, um, seconded by, uh, Councilman Jefferson. Is there any comment on the motion to put it out for public comment? Okay. All the role, uh, Councilman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? I saw, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, so that motion without public comment is approved by voter nine to zero. Next, uh, we'll get a presentation on our minority business policy. And we, it looks like we have about 10 minutes.
I'll try.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Council, um, we'll go quickly through this presentation, um, the MWDBE, that's Women Owned Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. It's a policy that we've had in place for a number of years to follow state law. And Eric Conti, our purchasing manager, is, should be on virtually. If there are any questions that I can't answer, he can, he can do that for you. So basically, we're in accordance with, uh, general statutes, we have this, um, guidelines to establish goals for minority participation in single prime bidding, separate prime bidding, dual bidding, construction manager at risk, um, and alternative contracting methods in amounts up to 500,000 or more. That threshold changed, um, when you all changed the threshold for, for bidding from 300 to 500, so we, we raise that as well with this program. Um, the outreach plan is applicable, the selection process for architectural engineering survey and construction manager risk services. Um, and the city of High Point's goal is 10%. So some of our guidelines, um, our, our plan are, is included with each bid package and reviewed with potential contractors at pre-bid meetings. The city invites MWDBE vendors to pre-bid meetings to facilitate, uh, proposing contractors' responses. Contractors are required to submit written reports of their participation within 72 hours of bid opening. And bid opportunities are posted on our website along with a link to North Carolina Hub, the North Carolina Hub Office, historically underutilized business office where additional assistance is available. Uh, we do have an online vendor registration that's on our website. Um, and we do provide assistance to those vendors that do not have, uh, internet access through our purchasing division. And once the applications are submitted, they are used to update the potential bidder list. And a copy of our guidelines, um, and our outreach plan is available on our website. Um, and is, like I said, is distributed with each, with each bid that goes out. Some statistics for you, so we started tracking in 2005 and through July of 2020, the city has formally bid, uh, just over $284 million in projects. Uh, participation is right there at about 25 million dollars, uh, or 8.7%. We only track MWDBE participation on construction projects per our statutory requirements. And, uh, it, it doesn't include commodity or other purchases that, uh, may be out. Got a few pages of, um, this patient by, we track this by calendar year, um, so we went back and looked at the last five years. So in 2015, we had, um, total projects of, uh, $1 million, um, and our total MWBE participation was 7%. And we will make this available for you all after, after the meeting, so you can get it in detail. Um, in 2016, we had a number of more projects at $22.3 million, um, and our total MWBE participation was just over 8%. In 2017, we had about 13.2 million, uh, with participation of 7.06%. In 2018, uh, we were at 22.7 million with a 5.77% participation. In 2019, um, we were at 7.8 million with participation of 4.56. And then I asked our purchasing manager to go ahead and update for 2020, we normally do this on a calendar year, but, uh, we went from July to, or January to Ju- July of 2020. Um, and we're currently at just over almost $9.2 million with a total participation of 13.07%. Didn't want to note a couple of big projects that are not included on any of the reports that I shared with you. The stadium project and the police headquarters project are not included, the stadium because it just, we, we finally got it wrapped up and, uh, Samit, who was our contractor, has just now, uh, recently gotten our numbers to us, but I'm, under that contract amount of about $38 million, we had participation of about 19%. Um, and then with our police station project, which is ongoing, this number, uh, is subject to change. Um, of a 19.3 million dollar project, uh, currently sitting at about 16%. That's kind of the report I have, um, you know, I think in, in general, we strive to do better. Our purchasing department, um, really understands the, the profound effect this has on our community and our need to, um, to, to do a better job of making vendors aware of this program to try to get more minority and women and disadvantaged business participation. Happy to take any questions, Eric contact hopefully is online if you have any questions for him.
I have any? Eric, this is our Councilman Holmes, um, do we have this broken out? I mean, I see the total, um, percentage, but is this broken out by groups? Do we know how much, what percentage are women, what percentage are black, what percentage, um, are Hispanic, Asian? Do we have this, this broken out?
We do, you know, this was, but yes, we do.
It's back there on, it's back there on your charts there, Eric. The far, the far right column is the total MWBE, the, uh, other columns are distinguishing the, the various, the.
MBE amount is the Minority Business Enterprise, the WBE is the Women Business Enterprise, um, and DBE stands as Disadvantaged Business Enterprise. And those definitions of those categories are spelled out in our policy, uh, that matches what the statute says.
So the minority on this case looks like it's at 1%.
And, and for, for this current calendar year to date, like I said, this was just a snapshot of the first six months of, of this year.
Where, where does that put us, um, have you guys done any comparisons to where that puts us at other cities our size in the state?
I, to, to my knowledge, we haven't done an in-depth analysis of where we compare to others. Eric, uh, contact, please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, we, we, we have not been able to do any comparisons simply for the fact that we have four people in our office and we do all we can to get the partation at levels we can, as much as we can locally. But, uh, yeah, I, it is public information, it can be attainable.
You may be able to get it through the state hub office.
Yes, that too.
We'll try to prepare a report for a future meeting if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think that'd be worth looking at.
Definitely, that'd be good. Over, over the years, what sort of, uh, sort of comments are we hearing from our community on our, our status with this? Are, are we hearing lots of good feedback, are we hearing lots of complaints about this? Is, in general, does our community at large appreciate the efforts we've made on this, or are we hearing that folks saying we need to do more?
I, well, I mean, from my perspective, I think we, I don't hear much from the community personally, I don't know, Eric, Eric Conte may hear more. Um, but as I said, I think we can always, always do more and strive to do more, definitely.
Eric contact, do, do you mind saying, does your department do anything to get community feedback on this?
Well, what we do is we try, anyone who comes into our office or enquires, calls, emails, we do all we can to assist them with the registration process. Educate them on how we process bids for the cities, how we post them on our website. So we do provide all that information, we make that information in our, in our, our action plan that's available on the website. You know, like Eric mentioned, every, every pre-bid meeting we have, we communicate that information to the contractors. A lot of the responsibility falls on the contractors too, because the contractors have to go out there and bring in. And, uh, they're, they're all aware of our good faith effort and our 10% goal. And, you know, so they have to provide all the statutory paperwork to prove whatever, uh, efforts they made to, you know, bring in the various different vendors and contractors.
It's Councilman Holmes, um, I, I've spoken with, uh, uh, some contractors and they have some concerns that there's some possible double dipping by some of the larger firms who may, um, have subcontractors under, say, their wives' names or things like that that may, um, allow them to qualify for, um, the MWDBE contracts. Is there, is there a vetting process that allows you to distinguish whether or not any of those types of things are happening to create a, uh, you know, an advantage for larger firms?
There's, there's, there's nothing that ever has been brought to my attention, I have not even heard any of that coming as a result of any of our bids. You know, and it has to be understood too, that, you know, a, a lot of the, I know some of the, the recent articles and stuff concern High Point projects that are us actually handled through the Guilford County Office. Most of the bids that we do, you know, with our construction projects are, are a lot of vertical projects, water and sewer. You know, our contractors are aware of our process and they're very good at following our procedure, so. You know, I, I know that they're out there trying and they're doing their best, can we do better? Obviously, yes, we can do better. And, and in fact, our office was even on the verge of, of starting some community outreach activities, you know, before all this COVID thing started and put restrictions on us visiting with people, so that kind of put a real slash on our efforts.
No, I, I think that would go a long way. I think that would go a long way to, uh, kind of quelling some of the, the, the fears or upping the understanding of the process for, uh, you know, potential, um, contractors in the city of High Point, so.
Yes, sir, I agree.
If those efforts are, if those efforts are, uh, going to be undertaken, I think it would go, I think it would be well received by the public.
Those are, those are things that are on our plans moving forward, you know, if we can ever get out of this scenario where we can get out there and meet and greet our folks, we would be in a better situation. But those are our plans.
I think there's a certification process, I know there is with the state. If you go in and, and there's some sort of a certification process to go and improve that you're a certified, already owned business.
Eric, I believe, I believe that's through the state, I don't know that there's a local process.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that's correct, they, they, they have to be DOT certified, they have to go through DOT, um, processes. We don't require DOT requirements unless it's a DOT project that obviously requires those, uh, contractors to be licensed for those things, but, um, yes, overall, they're, they're pretty well at going through that process too.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I was going to say, um, I, I do want to make it known how much I appreciate Assistant Manager Omedo and Eric Constey, Conti, for bringing this, um, information. In my estimation, in my sort of, I guess, what you call, um, somewhat quicker.
sort of, I guess what you call somewhat quick assessment, is that where we are on this needs a whole lot of work. And I, I, I don't know exactly what that role looks like, except I would imagine that it would require some deliberation, that it would require being assigned to a specific group, whether it's a committee or task force or whatever it is. But I do think we need some work on this. I know that in the past several months, our commitment to ensuring that High Point, being North Carolina's international city, that we fully embrace everything of what that means. I think that it's got to include us looking at this a little bit deeper to see about how we can improve it. I, I heard what Mr. Conti said about having a four member staff, which I get. And so maybe they're at capacity. Nevertheless, I think our community feels it when we don't have results that shape up with what North Carolina's international city should have. And so I, I, I mean, maybe there's some deliberation that we can have. If not, I, I kindly love to make a motion that we put this in committee to actually be worked on in consideration with our consultant. And that we look to actually have a actionable improvement plan going forward.
Which committee would you want to put that in?
Um, I know Councilman Hudson thinks he gets everything sometimes.
My fault.
I mean, I, I, you guys think PNL or Community Development could be more appropriate? I, I mean, you guys tell me, you guys are both the chairs of those two.
I assume you may want to consider the Finance Committee just because we're the ones that are going to be approving some of these expenditures.
You said Finance instead of the two.
Yeah. I mean, it's arguable to put it in Finance because they produce, they approve the contracts for these various projects. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Eric. Could I add just one perspective, please? Go ahead, Eric. You're recognizing.
If, if, in comparison, and yes, we would have to do some more comparison. I, I just want to make, make it duly noted that the city of Greensboro, I believe, anywhere has a staff of five to seven MWBE coordinators that carry out, that carries out this function on behalf of that city. And I know we're looking for one and it's a great start, but it, like I, like you all made your statements, it is a lot of work and, and we do have to strive to improve. But I just wanted to make that duly noted.
Yeah. And, and, and actually I appreciate that because I know one of the things that we were mulling over was whether or not that would be a position that would come and be funded at a certain point. Certainly we appreciate you providing that contextual knowledge. I, I, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we were trying to figure out which committee was going to.
It's, it's your motion. So I mean.
It's, um, I, I, I can appreciate the, the Finance, and we're talking about those appropriations are going, or this going to Finance Committee. But being the community connection element to this, I would say that one of the two of these would be probably something a little bit more appropriate.
Well said. Mr. Mayor, I'll round out my motion and ask that be placed to Communities.
Okay.
Can you clarify the motion? I couldn't hear.
The, the motion is to place this a consideration of our outreach to MWBE into the Community Development Committee for Study. There's a, there's a motion. There's not been a second. Is there a second by Councilman Tyron Johnson? Is there any discussion on the motion prior to our voting? Okay. Hearing none. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson? Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So this, this item is placed in committee for study. And if there's nothing else, what we're going to do for those who are listening, who are not in the chamber and who are listening, we're now going to adjourn the special meeting and commence our regular meeting. Why don't we have a five minute break for everyone? A necessity break?
Yes.
For five minutes after we adjourn this meeting and then we'll reconvene. So is there a motion to adjourn? It's, motion to adjourn is made by Councilman Hudson and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, Chris Williams. I'll call the roll for the motion to adjourn. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson? Councilman Jones? Was that an aye?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And Mayor votes aye. So the special meeting is now adjourned and we'll have a five minute recess and then we'll come back and begin the regular meeting.
We need to just stay on the same link.
5:40, we'll call it 5:44.